Hey, good evening, everybody. It's January 4th. It's a Tuesday. We're having two meetings tonight. We're going to have our annual reorganizational meeting, which we will close, and then I will open another meeting that's a regular town board meeting. So thanks for joining us. Would everybody like to join me in the pledge? I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation. With liberty and justice. Thank you. I will ask all town board, non-town board members to mute. And if anybody wants to speak, please just raise your, the hand icon. I would like to make a motion for our consent agenda for our January 4th reorganizational meeting to include nineteen resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero one through twenty twenty-two zero thirty, omitting resolution twenty twenty-two zero twenty-one, which we will motion at our regular town board meeting. May I have a second? Is that Alan?
Yes.
Oh, thanks. Do any other town board members want to omit or amend any resolutions?
I would like to.
What, Ed?
Would you sound the resolution on the town board liaisons?
Yes.
I think it's due time that we recognize that transfer station is an entity unto itself and should be a separate component assigned to someone. When I'm gone, somebody should get that as an assignment. It's like maintenance, transfer, conservation board. It's because it's something totally not included here.
Is it not on our liaison list?
No.
Why don't we omit twenty twenty-two zero zero eight as well? Actually, why don't we leave it on and amend it at our next regular meeting? We'll put it on as a discussion item. I got this out. Yeah, whatever you want to do is fine. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it standing for our twenty-nine resolutions minus twenty twenty-two zero twenty-one with a note to Joan that we will review the liaison. We could speak about it and get it on our next meeting agenda at the end of January. Is that okay, Ed?
That's fine.
Does anybody else want to comment on anything or omit anything? Any questions from the public, any town board members? Okay. What do I say? Any discussion? All in favor? I. Any opposed? The consent agenda for a January 4th reorganizational meeting is unanimously approved. Thank you for all of your hard work on this, Joan. I would also like to say that in this meeting, Joan Winnie is now our clerk and Jessica Condes, our deputy clerk. I would like to thank our outgoing clerk, John Gautier, for his nine years of service and his wicked sense of humor and amazing taste in concertina music and all of the wonderful things that he brought to professionalizing town hall and business as we strive to do. So we wish him all the best in his retirement. Thank you all. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
I. Meeting adjourns unanimously. ELS, Alan. Six oh four. Joni, we adjourned at six oh four. I motioned Alan seconded. Okay, everybody. Welcome. It's January 4th. Welcome to our regular town board meeting for the town of Ryanbeck. Would everybody like to join me in the pledge? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Did it better the second time.
Well, practice, practice, practice. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve our prior minutes of October 25th, 2021, November 8th, 2021, November 22nd, 2021, and November 7th, 2021.
So move.
Is that chance?
Yes.
Great. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions from any town board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. I am going to take the Thompson Mazzarella Park artificial turf multipurpose playing field presentation. And Alan, before I do that, I noticed Warren is not here for the solar. Do we need him here for the solar?
I don't think so.
Okay, Jim can handle it?
Yeah, Jim, yes.
Jim, you think you can?
Well, I got this absolutely.
Okay, great. So we're going to do the Thompson Mazzarella Park field first because I believe the chair of our rec committee has another engagement. So Michael, James, and is Tim with you, James?
He is not. I'm, I'm all alone here.
Okay, great. Michael and James, thank you for coming. Who would like to start this off?
Let me start. First, we're the park development committee. The rec committee is still a different committee, although there may be some discussion at some point of combining those two committees once we get this field built. This has been a project that's been a long time in the making. And I don't know how many of you, well, many of you looking around have been part of this for many, many, many years. And I'm super excited that we've reached this moment. The original comp plan for the town and the park included in it a placement and rough design for this field. It's been intended since that plan was approved. And we are now taking the final steps to implement it, which is really, really exciting. James is here to answer questions that might come up that are very specific about field construction and what it is entailed. I'll give a brief thirty-five, forty-second description of some of the things that we talked about in the committee about the field, the questions of how the turf surface itself, it being artificial, were made, constructed, whether it came from recycled materials, how it gets recycled when its useful life is done, have come up and we've asked Jim to comment on some of those questions. The questions, other questions that came up in the committee were, why are we using an artificial field when we have so much grass? And why do we need this? And we talked about a lot of those things in the committee. I'm willing to sort of, I can circle back or start to talk about some of those things now, depending on what board members would like to hear. You guys lead me. Where, where would you like to, those are the big questions that came up.
Well, I think we're here to hear from Jim what this quote entails, how we got here, what part of a bid it's for. I just want to remind everybody that this plan was approved by the planning board in September 15th of 2014. We have spoken to the planning board and our acting zoning administrator, and the planning board has recommended that the only thing we need to do is apply for a site plan amendment based on this newest plan to construct the soccer field. So I have spoken with Jim Levy about that, who is here, and asked him to take, take charge of this paperwork and get us on the planning board agenda as soon as possible in January or February. It's a very simple process. So as far as artificial turf and natural grass, let's address that after the bid. And I would like something written from you guys so we can disseminate it to the public. I've been finding that those are the biggest questions that we're getting, but I'd like to get an overview of financially where this bid is and what the timeline for it is and what it, what it includes. Does that sound about right, guys?
Yeah, that'd be great. And we, we can absolutely come, come with a document that, that, that sort of summarizes our discussion and gives some clear guidance. I thought we'd do that with.
And I think, as I presume Jim will, if he speaks to the actual construction of what they're doing, it will speak to the drainability and overall performance of this field.
I just want to be able to get it out to the public because you can see there's a dozen people here and we want people to know what the thought process is and what's included here. So that's it. So thanks, Jim, and I guess take it away.
I'm glad to do that. My name is Jim Cotella. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York, and I work for the Clark Companies. I got involved in this project over a year ago when Michael contacted me. And about that time, he arranged for me to get a set of the drawings from Weston and Sampson that you were alluding to earlier had been approved for, that contained the, this project itself. The set of drawings right on the cover of that set, and they're dated May 2013, say for review and not for construction. So what I did after looking those over and having some back and forth with Michael, I arranged to come out and look at the site on, I believe it was the end of September, September 29th, and I met with a few of the board members and reviewed everything. And at that time, my marching orders were to develop a supplemental set of drawings to the Weston and Sampson drawings so that they would be construction drawings, construction-ready drawings, and also put together a price proposal, an outline of a co-op price proposal. So at any time, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I'll just give you a little bit of an outline here. The drawings that I provided before the holidays basically utilized those Weston and Sampson drawings. We kept the, we kept the field in the same location. We kept the grading plan the same. We kept the site drainage as shown so that if there's future build-out of Little League fields and other things that are shown on those drawings, we tried to keep everything we could the same. We supplemented an erosion and sediment control plan to bring it into compliance with the new standards, the current standards. And we provided the details that weren't shown in that set of drawings from 2013 that weren't shown for the field cross-section and how the field itself is built. There is some site drainage under the field. As someone just alluded to, these fields vertically drain. We would anticipate that if there are any anything that was approved, when this project was approved, if there's any swept or anything, we will comply with any of that. We can file our own sweep if that's needed, stormwater pollution prevention plan. But we basically took that set of drawings and supplemented it with a more detailed set of construction drawings, showing the anchor curb, which is a flush curb. It would be a no-mow curb, showing the drainage underneath, showing the porous stone, the fabric on subgrade, showing the dimensions of the field and the buffers, and basically then took that, did a takeoff, and priced the project using the cooperative purchase proposal, which is a way to piggyback on previously bid projects for synthetic turf. It's been going on in New York State since 2014 when the legislation was passed and approved. And we were doing it in Pennsylvania and Maryland before that, but I, I believe we've done forty-some projects similar to this of synthetic turf and tracks through the cooperative purchase. So, and I believe like twenty-six or more in New York State. So basically, that's it. These, these fields vertically drain, but we do provide a conveyance system to get to the detention retention ponds that were shown. We're going to build everything out the way it's shown so that if there's a, something added to this in the future, as this master plan shows, it's already ready to go. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I did talk to, Michael arranged for me to talk to Sue earlier today. She had some questions, I think from, from Michael's committee. She had a number of questions that dealt with the life of the turf, disposal of the turf, safety of the turf, recycling, reuse. A number of different questions that were good questions, and I followed up with a, a quick email to her with, for some of the information she asked for. But basically, we spent a half hour on the phone about noon today, going through some of her questions that Michael alluded to already.
Thank you. Jim, can you briefly take us through the, the cost for this?
Sure. And I believe I shared with you an outline of, it's more or less a outlining the different steps that are involved and then putting a price to this.
We have that document. It's a five-page document in front of us.
Yes, and I believe the total at the end comes to a million two ninety-six or something like that.
Yep. And does this include the lighting and the fence?
It does not. It does not. The lighting itself, and when we, when we met out there, lighting and fence were, were pieces that we did talk about. I've, I've reached out and got any quotes for the lighting, but let me go through this quote first. It, it basically is taking the site from what it is now and preparing the site. It gives some breakdowns. A big chunk of this work is all the storm drainage work, whether it was shown on the original drawings or supplemented by what we needed to do.
Take us through the sixteen thousand dollars. If you could just go by the amounts and then just briefly.
Glad to do it. So the first part, the sixteen thousand dollar part, is basically your construction entrance and your environmental protection, your erosion and sediment control plan, all the things that you have to do, the tracking pad to come in and out. We're going to, you know, have, have a lot of porous stone coming in that we'll be buying locally. I think one of the reasons that we got involved is there was some people on the committee that were familiar with the work that we did at Bard College. And we had a very similar field that we built there. And it, you take a number of the same steps and that first sixteen thousand dollars, and all of these prices are through the co-op. They all.
I'm just going to say for the public, the co-op is a bidding mechanism whereby we can piggyback. It's like going off a state or a county contract. It's a pre-approved bid that is in compliance with our, our procurement policy.
Exactly. Well said. And basically, you need to break down each of these. This is a preliminary proposal, but once we agree with what the scope of work should be, it can be finalized and put into the form that shows all the co-op breakout. It includes all bonding, co-op fees. It's, it's a turnkey proposal. It starts off, as we said, that first sixteen thousand dollars is all the preliminary erosion and sediment control, site prep, construction entrance, inlet protections, concrete washouts, all of those things that we have to do to be in compliance with the New York State DEC manual. The next section, which is the earthwork section, the excavation, is a bigger ticket portion of the work. I believe that total was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We have to strip this out. We have to remove this topsoil. We are set up to be able to either export this topsoil or to put it in place. If, if you would like to keep the topsoil, sometimes that can be valuable to you in the future. But when we met out at the site, it was thought that we should be complete so you didn't have to find, we can truck it to a place that you want, stabilize it there, we can get rid of it. But that's, that's important. We can't have any topsoil underneath this field.
So this price includes you removing the topsoil to a place for us to keep for later or do something else with it?
Exactly. I can either remove it to a place you want, or I can dispose of it off-site if that's, that's your prerogative. The next big section is all the drainage work. After the earthwork is shaped in accordance, and the earthwork does include all the ponds and the things that are shown on the Weston Sampson drawings. The next section is all the drainage details that do the drainage under the field and then convey this drainage to all the site drainage that was shown on the Weston and Sampson drawings. That again is another big ticket item, but it goes on for a number of pages with the details and is broken out, and that's the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar total, I believe, is what you're seeing in front of you. Next is the, the curb details. I've sized this curb such that a fence could be added into the curb. But, you know, if we want to do a fence, I'm probably thinking we're better off to have that fence be outside, so the field isn't quite as restricted so that you have a flush. Right now, I've got it designed so that the curb acts as our turf anchoring system, but also is flush to the grass. So everything's.
The curb delineates natural grass from turf, and it's totally at the same level.
Exactly. But it's also, they create a swimming pool of sorts with, 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 with the curb.
Yep.
Like the water stays within the curb.
And Jim, you're recommending that the fence be put on the grass portion outside the curb?
It's totally up to you. We aren't showing fencing right now. Fencing would be an add, but we certainly could, could, controlled access is a good thing for these.
I, I mean, how, why would we not put fencing in immediately? Don't we stand risking damage? Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, your hand is up. I'll get right to you. Don't we stand risking damage to the field without it being fenced?
The complexity of integrating the fence and the curb seems kind of insane to me, but am I wrong?
I don't think it makes sense to put the fence right next to the curb. I, I think that you'll find that the playing surface of the field, you're going to want to have a setback where people can, teams can stand easily, watch what's going on, where when practices are happening, family members or parents, parents of sports team members can, can be inside the fence watching. So you're going to want to have a border around the curb that's included within the fence area.
How big is the border, Michael, approximately?
I would say you'd want three yards. Does that make sense, James?
I would want every bit of that, yes.
Yeah, at least.
Outside the curb. The, the issue is certainly we can determine where the fence goes, the height of the fence, but you need to understand that you're going to have an area between that curb, and that, that curb is going to act like a no-mow strip for you, you know, so the mower can go right up next to the curb and you're not hitting the synthetic turf.
We, we have to mow outside. We have to mow in that buffer.
Exactly. And so that's why I thought it's best to have this conversation. We, we should put the fence in, in conjunction with this. It just wasn't in the original proposal because height of fence, exact location, those things hadn't been determined yet. Do we want a forty-two inch fence, a four-foot fence, something, somebody can jump over a six-foot fence? Typically, you know, these fields, there is controlled access, so somebody doesn't drive out and do donuts. But we don't necessarily have to put up a fence, you know, six or eight or ten foot high. It's totally up to you. I, I looked at that, and the lighting is, is add alternates.
Josh, were you going to say something?
I don't know the specifics of the site plan, but two questions. Is there any dimensions that were pinched on how big the donut is, northwest, southeast, in terms of how far we can go with the fence? And does this affect the planning board application as to where the fence is?
No, the planning board has told us they need just an amended site plan. Melody, is that, is that, are you, yeah, okay. I don't think it's going to affect it. I think we need to come up with a price for a fence. We need to decide what kind of fence, and we need to plan on that. I just think it would be foolish to construct a million-dollar field without a fence and risk damage to it.
I think that the, I think our committee can take care of, of looking at the, the border width, coming up with some suggestions of fences that match what's, what's being used in the park and what we're intending on using in other areas in the future, and, and have that in time for that to be constructed along with the finish of the field. So I, I'm not, I'm not concerned that, that it's going to hold this up, and it definitely needs to be part of the process. The big thing is, is we need to get quotes, and it looks like we're going to have to do some fundraising to meet the fencing and lighting goals as well. So that can, can, can happen along with, you know, those, making those decisions about what, what material.
I think so. I mean, we're going out to bond, and we cannot commit money. We can't commit to a project unless we have the money. And I'm saying for me, I don't know how the rest of the board is, that I, I want this to be fenced from the beginning.
I think it has to be fenced.
Yeah.
I agree.
So we need to know financially what that is, where the money's coming from, and we need a whole, whole price. It's not a big deal. You guys can turn it around, but it's just something we need to address.
Yep.
And I, I'm glad, first of all, to answer the question, there is enough buffer area as designed. Fence was anticipated in, in the 2013 drawings. It just didn't say, yeah, it just did not say what that fence height was. And I wanted to make the point that, that you will have to mow inside the fence.
Yes, we know that. We got that, Jim. We got.
And you want the, right. You want the buffer area big enough that your mower can comfortably do that.
Yes.
So what I could do is I'll, I'll provide a starting point rather than a blank. I'll give you a fence location that I recommend, and a fence height, and I'll give you a price for what that is as an add alternate. And then you can take it from there and say, no, we want, we'd rather have six-foot fence. We'd rather move it out. We'd rather move it in. Why don't I do that so that it?
What, what height are you recommending, Jim?
I would recommend either four or six foot.
Four.
Well, would six keep people from climbing over, and is that a concern?
I, I don't think a six-foot fence is going to keep the people who would climb over the fence from climbing over. And I think it's, it's a visual and aesthetic obstruction to the field. Yeah, that you don't, you don't get any benefit from it. If you have a four-foot fence that's closed and locked, the same kid that's going to jump over the six-foot fence is going to jump over the four-foot fence if that's going to happen.
How is, how is it finished on the? How is it? How is it finished on the top? And will a four-foot fence include, you know, would people lean on a four-foot fence? And then would it would it would that undermine the structural integrity of it after a while? I mean, what you what goes on?
You can look at the fence. Have you seen the field at Bard? Because there's a there's a four-foot fence around that field as well.
I can't remember how it's finished.
It's a it's a black chain link fence. And it has on the tops of the posts, little, you know, covers that keep the post, that cover the coast, the post. And people stand and lean against it watching games all the time.
Is there a vertical? Is there a vertical?
Bar. Yeah, pipe along the top.
Okay.
I'll send a I'll send a sketch of what I recommend. But to your point, this has got to be a a heavy-duty commercial-grade fence with a top rail and a bottom rail. Even at four foot, you want it to be something that'll stand up to people leaning on it. But I agree with what Michael said. We can build the fence as high as you want. If somebody wants to
I just I just wanted to raise it, and you know, we're we're taking the recommendation of of the committee. And I hear what you're saying about, you know, visual harmony.
Want to keep bicycles, kids, you know, any kind of vehicle. People, the the fields are built for people to run around on. So if the worst thing that happens is some kids jump the fence and are running around on it, I I don't think that we're, that's kind of what it's going for.
Yeah.
But we don't want people to ride bicycles on it. We don't want people to try and skateboard on it. We don't want people to drive on it. So.
Okay, are we? We have a couple more big points here, I think.
Yes, I think we're down to the one of the bigger items is the the stone base under the field, the porous stone base itself, the fabric that goes on the subgrade, porous stone base, the finishing stone, all of those things that provide the the drainage storage capacity. When I talked to Sue earlier today, the stone that we specify and provide has forty percent voids. So this field will totally vertically drain, yet be very stable. So anyway, that's another big portion of the work. The field itself, there were some soccer goals with a clamping system that we talked about providing that clamping system just allows you to lock the goals down. But I know you're going to do more things on this field than just soccer. But that was what we showed as a starting point. We then have a lot of restoration around the outside to stabilize everything. So go ahead.
Lighting, is that going to be done later, or where are the electrical conduits for this?
Okay, so lighting is another potential add alternate if you want. I reached out to Musco Lighting. They are the first of all, they work with the cooperative purchasing. They have their own co-op, and they can work through this one. So lighting could be incorporated here. They quoted me for this project specifically. I do not have the electrical quote, but I can tell you that when we talk about fencing, you're talking about something in the forty-five, fifty thousand dollar range. When you talk about lighting, you're talking about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to have a turnkey complete system. Like I say, I've got a firm Musco quote based on a preliminary design. But I need to know where 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 we can get the power that we need. But I did have an electrician without going to the site, give me enough information.
Okay.
We've lit over a hundred fields, so so we we pretty much know it's going to be within twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars of that.
Okay, fair enough. So is this a firm bid, or is it a contingent on anything?
I I think it's for the scope of work that I've outlined, the last item that you see is the turf itself. The synthetic turf with all the infill, the lines, the logo, the lettering, whatever, whatever it is that you want. It's this number is firm if if we don't change anything. But it's it needs to be finalized through the co-op itself. I've talked to them. They're ready to finalize it for you. But I thought we were better to have this discussion and make sure there weren't any changes that you want. I can I can firm this up with add alternates of fence and potentially lighting. The lighting could be deferred to a future time if you want.
I'll leave that I'll leave that up to Michael, but we would like the fence add-on.
I think we need to include the fence right now and and have a number for lighting that we can work with to do some fundraising.
Now, Michael, I just want to, it's our, we have, and I don't have the figures in front of me because I'm I'm not that smart. But we have money saved and put away for this, and the town has committed to bonding. And our total commitment to this is a million dollars. So and your commitment from private fundraising is three hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah, between what we've privately fundraised so far from the soccer league, the the porch fest, which is the Friends of the Thompson Park, and some individual donors, that's that's the number that we're at.
Three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so we're we're close enough. We're we're look, we'll need some more money for fence, so we'll have to address that.
We have we have not gone out and done a hard appeal yet to people now that this is this is bonded and we're moving forward. I I I see that we're going to have the opportunity to raise a lot more money.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear that the town is committed to a million dollars, and there's we need a hard commitment to cover the fence and everything else before we start this. Is that ta- town board members, is that have I have I articulated that correctly?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, yes, Chauncey?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that that's good. I think we're all on the same page. What I'd like to see is the final number, including the fence, the lighting breakout, I leave to you, Michael and Jim. And we need a schedule. You need to tell us what we need to do and when. We've charged Jim Levy and Josh and Michael DeCola will work with him to get this approved by the planning board as soon as possible. And I will work with Jim and Michael and the town board to get the bonding and the funding together as soon as we have final numbers. And then we'll get our attorney involved for a contract.
Very exciting.
When are we expecting to break ground, Jim?
I mean, where's my deposit check showing up?
I think one of the things that I would want to make sure is that if there's anything we need to do to supplement this approval, you mentioned site plan amendment. If there's any documentation that was filed with these Weston and Sampson plans, stormwater pollution prevention plans.
We have all our SWIP stuff, yep.
Okay, I just would like to get a copy so that we make sure we comply with whatever is outlined there. We have to have it before we break ground. I'd like to see it.
Josh and Jim and Gretchen, our planning board secretary, will get you everything that you need, and we will work with you to get them in documentation to the planning board for final approval, right, Melody?
Um, a quick mention about the planning board thing. I I I saw in the in the email that went back and forth that we had switched to grass at one point. And what we had proposed was that whether or not grass could be used as an alternative. I don't think we ever completely jettison the idea of a turf field. We just wanted to be able
There's no, there's no issue with it. Originally, this was a turf field. We did the SWIP for turf. We went back and did it for grass.
Right.
We are fine. I checked with the planning board. I checked with our zoning officer. We only need to amend the site plan. We're covered for both artificial turf and grass. We've done it all. I do need from you, you know, more, I would like something written to get out to the public about why we're going with artificial turf. And basically, the reason is extreme climate change and the ability for this field to be played on all year long, but I'd like
So while we're all here and Jim's here to ask this question, I I have a number that I think, but I'd like to hear what Jim's number is. The number of grass fields that you would have to to build to support the kind of traffic that this field can support with and be playable the next day. You know, we're we're talking about twenty soccer teams, the schools' teams, adult leagues, pickup games that can happen on a regular basis. You know, we don't have enough grass fields in the whole town to support that amount of play. So if you could answer that question, Jim, I don't know if that's ever come up before.
Well, there's there's no doubt. First of all, we build natural grass fields too. So, you know, what I tell people is that one synthetic turf field will make all your other natural grass fields better because they're more durable. They're all-weather. They take the abuse when you need to. And you you kind of alluded to it. We learned in school about crop rotation. You need to rotate play off of natural grass fields if you're going to keep them as good, safe, playable fields. So a synthetic turf field will take the place of five to seven natural grass fields. If I had to, I I haven't had the question come to me like that before. But if you were going to pin me down and want an answer, that I guess that's where I'd be at.
Michael, the town board is all aware of this, the the
Yeah, it's a public meeting, so I wanted to put that question out there so that people could hear it. That's why.
I just want, I want a narrative from you guys. Yeah, I want something we can send out.
It's forthcoming.
Thank you. And Jim, we just need a schedule from you of what you need from us, when and when we can start. I mean, you know.
I I will absolutely put a schedule together. It'll show this period of time between now and the approval. When can I think that we would have final approval as far as the site plan amendment? February, what's a safe, let's do something, you know.
End of February, I would say, at the latest, right, Melody? Your second meeting in February, which would be the third Monday in February.
That's what we're shooting for, to get the first presentation on the the meeting coming up in two weeks.
So we'll be we'll be on in January, and it'll be hopefully approved by the third Monday in February.
I'll put a schedule together. Based on that, the drawings that I provided, once everything is resolved, will be stamped. Drawings, everything that the planning board would probably require for their site plan amendment.
And concurrently with that, we need all of the financials from you. We need a a contract for approval by our attorney. And and we have to go ahead with the bond.
We can do that. We can pull it all together now.
Hold on, Jim. Did you have something, Chauncey?
Yes, do we also need a narrative on the need for the field for the public?
I don't think so, but we certainly could.
I can include that. I mean, I have I have a very, I have a pretty close tie into what we're dealing with now, what what kind of need there is very locally in the area. The park serves the entire county, so it's not just you know, our
At the most basic level, how many fields are we reducing into one? Baptist, stone church?
What you're what you're what what you're really getting, and this will be all part of the narrative, is a field that can be played on every day for eight to ten hours and then be played on the next day, eight to ten hours, regardless of what the weather is. And we don't have that anywhere in the town.
I also just want to say that we've gone through exhaustive community, I mean, since twenty twelve about why we're building this, but we can we can talk about it again.
I'll 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 take up as much time with you of this now as you want me to. I'm I'm totally happy to shut up.
We, this is why we're building the the park is for the field, so. But we can certainly address that. And, you know, anyone who has public comments can come to a meeting. But is there any other questions or comments or concerns from any town board members? Anyone from the public have anything to say? And I want to say thank you, Michael and Jim, for coming. Jim Levy and Josh are going to work with you on getting the documents ready and will be I'll be working with you to get all the financials ready, and we'll get our attorney involved. But we're very excited about this, and it'll be a big deal for our community to have this field. So thank you both very much.
I want to thank the whole town board for for taking this on and and moving it forward. It's a huge thing for for so many families and so many kids in the town. It's going to be great.
Well, you know, that's it's you. It's for, that's what we do. We're here for our residents, and this is a big deal for Reinbeck, so we're excited.
It is. It's going to be great.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you, guys.
I'll I'll follow up. I'll put the schedule together, and it sounds like everybody's enthusiastic about it. If, once we have approvals, we'll get a shovel in the ground and get this built for you right away so you can utilize it this summer.
Thank you, Jim.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Michael, thanks. Talk to you soon.
Bye, guys.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Great. Alan, I think you and Jim are up next for our community.
Yes, so there was some concern that all of us had with legal vulnerability of doing a zoning change for solar. And we, Jim and and Warren Raplansky and I met. And the conclusion we came to was that best way to handle community solar would be to to write a specific and separate section of the zoning law to address solar, community solar, that is. And so Jim has run that by the planning board, and he's going to summarize in a minute. I'll let him take the floor and summarize what what they said. But what I'm looking for tonight is is basically the agreement of the board to go ahead and take it to the next level of detail and start writing a a draft zoning law that specifically addresses community solar. So with that said, let's have Jim.
Yeah, thanks. So wait, you know, the, I I did reach out to the planning board and got some preliminary comments discussing the fact that this is still kind of a high-level discussion as a follow-up to what, you know, Alan and I, and I guess Warren initially discussed a couple months ago. And the fact that community solar really, you know, provides a public benefit different than I think a lot of other solar installations do. How owner of the region or the area could buy panels, thereby owning a piece of the project, making it kind of a locally-owned project. There's a benefit that renters can buy in and and own a panel. People who can otherwise put solar on their properties due to their shading on their lot, their their property or other impediments can potentially buy in. You know, this helps meet the New York State goals for solar and and, you know, generally town is looking to do overall. You know, so with that, I I did reach out to the planning board, again, telling them this is a high-level, you know, kind of a high-level concept at the moment. We haven't really gotten into the details and just asking for some for some preliminary thoughts on the idea of, I think what we'd be doing is developing special use permit criteria for community solar. And I I would say in general, I think the responses that I got back, and you know, we didn't hear from every planning board member, but I did hear from a number of them. Generally, I think the board is is absolutely supportive of this. They like the idea of focusing in on community solar because a little different, and it does have that public benefit. But, you know, they do want to make sure that what we do moving forward provides limits on, you know, what we we are and are not proposing in terms of regulations for community solar, which is obviously, you know, what we're going to do with the development of regulations. They had a thought, actually, two members of the board had a thought that we should consider the potential grid. If you do a community solar.
You dropped out.
The the board had had mentioned the, the planning board had mentioned the idea of potentially developing a microgrid with a community solar installation, which is where the power is is essentially guaranteed. If power goes out on a larger grid, this installation could help power some smaller area and sub it would probably require onsite, you know, power storage and things like that. But microgrids have actually become a very big thing in New York since Superstorm Sandy. It was a big discussion topic and a lot of the work that I did in the New York Rising work, trying to bring, you know, communities back after that storm and also after Irene and Lee, so that it does still provide power to a certain area within, you know, within this this area that, you know, the either this house would be or this power storage would be. So that if the larger grid goes out, you can still provide power to, say, you know, vital facilities or certain parts of town, a certain proximity, things like that. We could look into.
I think that, you know, I can pull the board, but I think that we I think that, you know, I can pull the board, um, but I think that we are all on board with this going to the next level. Um, Chauncey?
Yes, Ed, yes, yes.
Josh?
Yeah, of course.
And uh, so Jim, I think that that, that's fine. And I'd like to, we also talked about doing an amendment. To allow cell towers in the uh office park. And I think that that should be done with this. Uh, because we are having coverage issues.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
I'm gonna charge you with doing that as well, Jim.
Does, does that dovetail to all of the 5G thing?
Uh, we have to do the 5G thing and Jim, I, I would, you know, like you to work. We need to really discuss what we want to prioritize, but I think the 5G thing, there's a lot of pre-written, you know, uh, co. Co-existence or co-placing of 5G on exist, uh, it's, it's very easy to do. It's been adopted. So I think if we could look at this community solar with 5G and cell tower allowed. In the office park overlay with the 5G and the cell tower being, I think, much easier than the community solar, that would be great. Do you agree, Jim?
Yeah, we could definitely take a look at that. We, we've talked about this, you know, on and off, I think in the past, and I think it's time has come, so I can, I can do that as well.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one stupid question?
No, Josh.
Is, is there any, is there, uh, community solar has a minimum size? Or it could be anything?
It could be anything that we say it is.
Right, but. Offers community solar to this, that, I, I just.
There is, there is uh a consideration about the fact that there's fixed costs that have to be dealt with. When you do community solar, mostly for connections to the grid and.
Our, the problem with our law was that we were doing microgrids and no one's investing in them because there's no. It's not financially feasible.
Yes, so we're, so the, the, my understanding is that you need to get up to at least five to ten megawatts before. Before you can make it financially viable.
Right. And that may change in the future. It might be four megawatts or three megawatts in the future. Okay, got it.
I, I actually think it's. It may. If, if, if utility prices go down, the number of megawatts is gonna go up.
Right, well, that, that's neither here nor there. We are going to move ahead with this. And we are also asking Jim at the same time, or even before, to get the 5G before us. And the uh zoning change to allow a cell tower in the office park area, which is the natural place where it should be.
Just wanna add one thing, and that is, it would be really good if we could get this in place in time to have something actually built. This year. If we, if we spend months doing a new zoning law, we're gonna lose the building season of twenty twenty-two.
Going to have to, we're charging Jim with doing it and. Along, and I think we're all in, behind it, so it's. It's you paying attention to Jim and moving it along, but I think the 5G and the cell tower is easy. I think the devil is gonna be in the details with the community solar, but we've expressed our willingness, so.
Let's have at it.
Great. Anything else on this, guys?
That sounds good. That's what I think I was looking for tonight, just. Position charts move forward with that, so I appreciate it.
And Jim, you know, we, we will, that's enough to get you started. And then we have like a twenty-nine page list from you of other stuff, so we'll be back.
It's all about prior, it's all about prioritization, but yes, there are other things.
I'm gonna move along then unless anybody has any more questions for Jim or, or anybody regarding this. Okay, thanks. Jim, are you staying or are you going?
I'm gonna listen in.
I would like to make, uh, I need a mo, I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-one. Acceptance of Garden Way Road Deeding and Related Matters. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any comments from the town board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Um, Bob, for your information, there, there's a closing that will take place on this. At one P M on the sixth. So the town will own the road uh on the afternoon of January sixth. So, so get your signs out and be ready to plow. It's ours on the sixth. We, we, we aim to please and we're here for the residents, so yeah. So get your signs going and you're gonna be plowing that on the sixth.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thanks. Um, I need a, um. I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-two to create our citizens advisory comp plan group.
Motion.
Thank you, Josh. May I have a second? Is that Alan?
Yeah.
Great. Um, I just want to see if, hold on, I'm, I'm slightly out of sorts here. Give me one. I, I apologize. Um. It's a lot of paper tonight.
Joan, uh.
Joan, yeah. Yeah, um, um. Citizens Advisor, have we heard from, um. Two people, have we heard from, there are two people who have not yet accepted.
They, they have. Jonathan, Jonathan Mensch has, and I thought Dan Shepley had as well, although not to me. I thought, I mean, I, I thought you said he had, uh, Elizabeth.
Dan was fifty fifty.
Yeah, like, okay, so Jonathan Mensch is on the committee and we're waiting to hear from Dan Shepley. But I want to thank everybody for doing this and this will be a, a great help to us. Is there, are there any other questions or concerns from any other town board members on this? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I'd like a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-three. To award the bid for our natural burial ground survey.
I'll make that motion.
I knew you would, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Um, is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. And I, um, I want to thank Suzanne for this. This is great. And Ed. Uh, I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-four to approve the RFP for tree care at the cemetery, Ed.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks. May I have a second?
Again.
Thanks, Alan. Um, is there any questions or any discussion by, uh, any town board members? Any questions or discussion from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes unanimously. Um, I would like a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-five. Authorized filming at the Thompson Mazzarella Park.
Second motion.
Thanks, Josh. May I have a second? Uh, thanks, uh, Ed. And I think this is a fifteen hundred dollars. It can go directly into our park fund. So it's a little bit more money for the lighting.
Tim, when is this happening?
I'm sorry?
Tim has been waiting for this to get approved all night.
Oh, is that Tim?
Hi, guys.
Hi, Tim. Oh, hi.
A very exciting meeting here.
I'm a former executive producer and line producer, so.
Very cool.
Yeah, yeah, now, now I'm not.
I think, I think Alan was your second, not Ed.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Am I referring to this? I've been referring to as um, as Star Park, but it, is it Thomas Mazzarella?
Thomas Thompson, Sal, Sally Mazzarella Park.
Gotcha, okay. So ju- just so everyone knows, we're not gonna be filming at the park. We'll, you know, we'll pay the fee, we're gonna be.
Yep. You're welcome to it.
I thought we were famous.
What?
A little bit.
Um, the other thing is that thank you for saving parking and opening it to the public. Our big concern is that people be able to take their dogs out and stuff, so.
Okay.
Enjoy it and um, have fun.
Okay, does my request to, um, that we go on the far side, is that okay? And then we'll keep the front open to the public.
Do whatever you like, just, just let our, let our residents into it and visitors into enjoy it.
Sounds good.
We will have faith in your, um, in your professionalism of location management.
Great, thank you.
Sure, enjoy and best of luck. Anything else, guys? Did we vote on this?
No.
Oh, all in favor?
Approved.
You're approved, Tim.
Great, alright, thanks, guys. I'm, I'm gonna go.
Yeah. I didn't realize that. I would have taken you earlier.
No worries, no worries.
Okay. Bye. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-six, Highway Department two eighty-four agreement. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Ed, okay. Um, any discussion or any questions? Uh, I want to say, Bob, thanks. Again, we're uh paving more roads. The roads look terrific. Now, I would just like to concentrate on getting our brining up because, um, it's such a great practice, but thank you. Our, our roads do look beautiful. You and the guys are doing a great job and we're grateful. Um, any other, I mean, any other comments or?
Wurtenberg's gonna look great next year.
Okay. Let's hope so. We've had, we got a lawsuit already on Wurtenberg. Let's hope we get another one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Bob. Um, I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-seven. To hire a temporary data clerk for the cemetery.
Make a motion.
Uh, okay, Ed, who's the second?
Uh, Chauncey?
I need to amend this, uh. Um, I need to make a motion to amend this for a total amount of hours not to exceed two hundred and sixty hours. And to begin on February fourteenth, we need that for civil service. May I have a second on my amendment? Thank you, Alan. Uh, Alan seconds the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Uh, carries unanimously. All in favor of the amendment on the floor? Motion on the floor amended. Aye, carries unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-eight, authorizing to advertise cemetery groundskeeper position.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Again.
Thanks, Alan. I also need to amend this. Um. What am I amending it to? We need to amend the hourly wage to twenty dollars an hour from twenty-three. Uh, the wage goes up after probation and upon Gary's retirement. But we just needed amended to twenty dollars an hour, Joan. Uh, may I have a second on my amendment to the revolution? In favor of the amended resolution, of the amendment? Amendment carries, uh, unanimously, Joan. All in favor of the resolution on the table? Resolution carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Um. I would like a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh thirty-nine, consideration to carry over highway department employees vacation.
So.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Um, I need a, a motion for resolution. Twenty twenty-two oh forty, appointing our planning and zoning. I, and, uh, consulting engineer.
No more.
Thank you, Chance. May I have a second?
Make it.
Josh, um, little discussion, is this also for the town as well as the, um. Planning and zoning board?
Well, did, did Ray operate for both?
Uh, Ray's conflicted out for everything. He's taking a position with Columbia County.
I understood, but in terms of his standing, he did both?
I'm sorry?
Um, so if we're, we're, for planting Ray for a short time, he did both of those things?
Yes, um, we can approve an engineer as we need. Um, and so this is an approval for a month-to-month uh agreement with them. Until the planning board has gone through a more rigorous, um, interviewing process. So any further questions? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Um. Uh, I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh forty-one, holiday pay time for transfer station employees.
I'll make the motion, but can I ask a question as well?
Let, let's have a second on the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Go ahead, uh, Ed.
Uh, does this awarding of, uh, holiday pay include the retroactive this past January first, which it should?
Um, so I'd like to.
This is the fourth.
I'd like to make an amendment to this. Um, it has to say, uh, whereas the town board wishes parity. Instead of recognize a job well done.
I agree.
Parity with other part-time jobs with set schedules. And this should also have vacation time per accrual as outlined in our employee handbook.
Yes.
And policy. Joan, did you get that? And yes, this will be retroactive from.
Thank you.
Retroactive from January first. Again, Joan, we're not doing this to recognize a job well done. We're doing this for parity. To other part-time jobs with set schedules. And this is to include vacation time per accrual as outlined in our employee handbook. And employee policy, retroactive January first.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure, thank you, Joan. Um, any further discussion? Uh, uh, I have an amendment on this. All in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor of the resul, whoever, resolution on the floor? Aye, uh, passes unanimously with an amendment. Thank you. Um. Hold on. Um, I think I have, uh. Now I can't find it. I have, um, the amendment that we, oh, here it is. Um, I'm taking this out of order, but I'd like to bring up resolution twenty twenty-two oh twenty-one. Um, appointments to the planning board. Um, may I have a second?
Oh, twenty-one, are we on the?
This is what we held. I'm taking it out of order. We're, we, we held it over from the, from the meeting.
It's crazy.
Twenty-two oh twenty-one.
Okay.
To the planning board.
Yeah.
I made a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Josh, thanks. Um, I'd like to amend this resolution. Um, may it be resolved that Melody Moore is reappointed as planning board chair for twenty twenty-two? Um, may I have a second to my amendment? Thanks, Josh.
It was signed the tenies, Alan and Josh were called.
I'm sorry, what? Am I getting everybody?
Alan and I did the same thing. It was like, anyway.
Field of vision, I think, but all in favor of my amendment?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor of the open resolution?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Melanie, we fixed it.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie, for taking this on. Doing a great job. Um, hard shoes, big shoes to fill, but. You're gonna kick it. Um. Okay, we did. I'm sorry, uh, item number twelve. I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh forty-two to hire a part-time transfer station employee.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Again.
Thanks, Alan. Um, any discussion, any questions? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. Um, I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two. Oh, forty-three for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, um, twelve B. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Um, bear with me one second because I have the. Paper. I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh forty-four. For our preliminary out, counts payable abstracts, V A P one. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Um, I am going to make a motion to amend this. To avoid check number two four oh six five for three hundred and seven dollars. This is for, um. A reimbursement that didn't have po- proper backup or follow. Our collective bargaining agreement, so I'm taking it back. And to void check two four oh six nine. And to issue. A new check for two four oh six nine in the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars. May I have a second on my amendment? Alan? Thank you. Did everybody understand? Basically, it's a correction of, uh, reimbursements. That we need additional information for before we can, uh, cut the checks.
Right.
Uh, all in favor of the re, uh, resolution on the table? Joshie? Thank you. All motion, Resolution 2022 oh forty-five for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, one B, may I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Um, are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Is that it for the meeting, or is there anything else?
No, the, the to-do list.
That's another hour.
All right, be nice.
There's new business and then there's the to-do list.
Okay, is there any new business before the town board? Okay, um. I don't know that we need to talk about that, hearing none, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead, but anybody can ask a question or anything.
You're talking, you're referring to the, uh, to-do list there, Elizabeth?
Yeah, or anything in, in, in general, um. Oh, you did, we have more to do, I, I.
Very brief. Um, I sent the board an email about it on December twenty, uh, December twentieth. And I would like to add that some appropriate spot, and we shall explore the development of dedicated pickleball. Courts at Thompson Mazzarella Park.
I think it's already on here.
I looked twice, I couldn't find it, if I missed it.
Did you, did you do Ctrl F pickleball?
I, I didn't follow that, Josh, but I suspect it's okay.
That's how I do it these days.
Park Recreation will add that, you know, I guess for the public, um. The biggest thing we want to do is update our capital plan, fund balance and reserve balance policy. Um, we have over five hundred thousand dollars coming to us for the American Rescue Plan, which we have to spend in the next couple of years. And what we're looking to do with it is to, um, expand. And create offices upstairs where the stage is, to renovate the court offices to house. Um, probably the assessors to build out in front of that. And to do this all with, uh, spacing and air quality, because the air quality downstairs, there's no. Air exchange and we can turn that into storage. And, um, I think the list is pretty. Self-explanatory, I don't, if anybody wants to go into it in depth. We have it on as a discussion item so that the public can see what we're doing. So that the public can approach us with anything that's not on here, that they think we should be doing. And so that we can look to it and, and amend it, it's a living document.
I think we crossed a couple of items off tonight, so we should work on that.
Listen, you know, we, we can update it as we want to. Anything else? Any other business before the town board? Anybody want to say anything? Anybody? Questions, comments, concerns?
It was a really good meeting.
Two good meetings. Yeah, looking forward to working with you guys, um, this year and, uh, with our new town clerk. Who, um, is an amazing resource for us, so, um, thank you, Joan.
Thanks, Joan.
I think Eleanor, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Hi, Eleanor. You just muted yourself. You gotta unmute yourself, there you go, hi.
All right, well, I couldn't comment earlier because I was trying to find the documents online. But I do a lot of bird watching at the park. And I'm concerned that they're going to tear out, by the looks of it, I just got a quick glance, they're gonna tear out the hedgerows. And that's what they did at the library, and it's a desert there, the library's a desert, there's hardly any birds left there.
Where are the hedgerows in the park, Eleanor?
I don't know, I, uh, cause I was trying to look at where you were planting with the fields, and like I said, I was on, there aren't any. It's not gonna.
I'm happy to meet you down there and walk it with you, I don't think there's any hedgerows there.
There's nothing there, yeah.
But I'm happy to walk it with you.
Okay, cause I wasn't sure exactly where they were putting it, and so, you know, putting the fields, and so. I mean, they already cut down some nice trees there before, you know.
Eleanor, I'm also gonna tell you that one of the, one of the, um, one of the big projects on here is starting our pollinator gardens. And we'll have two going in this year to support birds and bees.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate all that, but it, it's just ironic that we keep ripping out the natural vegetation. And, you know, then we have all these plans to, you know, to do all this good work supposedly.
But we haven't done that in the park, we haven't really ripped anything.
All right, well, that's good, I mean, you, you know, I'm glad to hear that, so I can continue to.
And show you where it's going, and it's. An area immediately to the east of the tennis and basketball area. Which, to your view, may have been ripped down years ago, but it's, it's.
Well, there were trees, a bunch of trees cut off there, actually, not that long ago.
Sorry, under the tennis courts did come down, yeah.
Yeah, they had to come down, they were dead and dying and.
We're gonna build much nicer things, there are a lot of nice plantings going yet.
Sure, but I mean, the problem is when, I mean, this is just my two cents, but when you overplan and you put in. You know, all sorts of stuff, you know, they put in, and I, there's gotta be a certain amount of that so that people have access, and I understand that. But when parks get overplanned, what happens is that it pushes out the, the wildlife and it pushes out. The natural beauty that it had, because, you know, then everybody comes in. You know, and just.
Your, your point was about birding, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, in this specific case, I'm just saying that if you overplan it and you put in too many walkways, you destroy. What you had there, because I'm not talking. That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm bringing this up, I just, I don't wanna complain afterward, because I didn't know. Library was gonna rip out all that, you know, all those bushes and brush there, and they had all these berries growing there naturally. I won't hold up your meeting, but.
You're not holding us up. We're happy you came, and what you're saying is important, it's a good reminder.
All right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Of course, thanks.
You have nothing better to do, Josh, I guess I can take you up on it sometime.
Public email address is available online.
See, what happens is. When Josh shows up to do a special walk with someone, they end up joining a committee and we.
I already applied, I already applied for a committee, sorry, that won't, yeah. All right, thanks.
Anything else? Any further comments, questions, concerns? Bob, you happy, Bob Wyatt?
Twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. All right, everybody, uh, hearing nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Bye, thank you.